This conference will now be recorded.
Permit me to know that all members in person are anticipating on the agenda at present, and can you hear me? John Regan, he won't be here tonight. Adam?
Correct.
Correct.
Ron Brooks?
Yeah, yeah.
Scott Ren?
Scott Ren, present.
Scott Ren, present.
Nick Lynch?
Present.
Steve Chambers?
Present.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Tom Pliner, Adam Menard?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Staff Assistant Rachel Cressy?
Present.
And the DDIS Director Darlene Coyle?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to just remind everybody before we get going to, when you're not in the classroom, to please mute the microphone on your computer. Thank you. Good evening. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, June 9, 2020, now called to order at 7:00 p.m. This meeting is being conducted remotely in accordance with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID virus 19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's orders suspend the requirement for the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. We order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by remote participation for the public only. Although some members of the Planning Board are physically located in the Silicones Meeting Room in Town Hall, those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting, we might lead by telephone call 1-312-7757, 3121, and enter access code 11337747477. Or the public can join via computer at goToMeeting.com/join/1337747477. The remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public that participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules to affect the clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair of the Board, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair gives the floor to you in statement name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, I will afford public a comment as follows. First, ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have listed, that has a list of all public commenters, I will call you on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call votes. If technical difficulties arise, we'll suspend the meeting or attempts to resolve are made, and we'll keep accurate minutes noting any disconnections, any reconnections of members. The first item on the agenda this evening is an A and R for the Auburn Mall, 385 Selkirk Street, I believe Todd Burder, if he is here, is representing him. Mr. Burder?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. So I guess this is take three on this A and R plan.
Is it the third time to chat, Todd?
It should be. I hope so. Well, there are three issues that present themselves with this plan. Is that my line or is it somebody else's? Can you hear me okay now?
Much, much better, thank you.
Yeah, okay. I think somebody must have been unmuted. Three reasons for the plan. One is to add 2,500 square feet of space to the plan. And this is really what drove this whole revision. Let me try to explain it to you a little bit. Reliant Medical Group, as you know, leases the old Macy's Home Store space. And this 2,500 square foot space, on the first floor, it's inward facing towards the mall, and was kept, it was outside of the lease with Reliant, so that's not a Reliant lease area currently. But above that, on the second level, in its interior to the Reliant space, that is Reliant occupied. So as we went through and tried to figure out, why are we off on the square footage versus the lease? We figured out that this was, it was a little jog, and this 2,500 square feet didn't get captured initially, and so it would have boxed out that second level space that Reliant occupies. And we wanted to keep that Reliant space all together, and there's no way to split. First floor, second floor, this is, lines on the ground essentially. So the revision here is to incorporate that 2,500 square feet into the separate parcel that we've created. So that's the first issue, and I hope I was clear with that, but we can go back if necessary. The second reason is, we started to look at whether or not this parcel would be able to really stand on its own without frontage and without an access strip. And although we thought it could and would, we've come to realize that the 20-foot requirement is within the Mass General laws, and so because of that, we've now incorporated a 20-foot strip which allows straight access to this parcel that we've created. And I think it makes sense, and we're going to deal with it in terms of reciprocal easement agreements that will govern the entirety of the campus so that there'll be access back and forth and rights of passage and whatnot. So that'll be dealt with internal to the occupants of those two, of the big parcel and then this parcel that we've created. So the third issue is a simpler, just technical thing. We realized that the scale of the plan that we submitted, on the plan that we submitted, it's one inch equals 80 feet, but your subdivision rules and regulations require one inch to 20 feet. And so while we think it's clear enough, and I think people can make the, people can read the plan, just in the effort to kind of dot all the i's and cross all the t's, if you're doing an endorsement or approval tonight, an endorsement, we'd ask that you make a finding that the scale on the plan is approved as is the one inch per 80 feet.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burder. Adam, did you have any thoughts on this?
No, I think Mr. Burder covered everything. As I said, it's kind of cleaning up the previous A and R and makes a bit more sense, and it's all set in my mind.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brooks?
I'm all set, Wendy.
Mr. Ren?
It looks fine to me.
Mr. Lynch?
I have no questions.
Mr. Chambers?
I'm all set.
Great, thank you, Steve. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the A and R as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Could you please identify yourself?
Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Brooks makes the motion, is there a second?
Scott Ren, I'll second.
Mr. Ren, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye, but just a point of procedure, do we need to say that we're approving it with relief from the 1 by 20 scale ratio?
Yes, thank you for that, yes. Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Seinhuber, aye. It is a vote. Thank you, Mr. Burder.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Applicant Eastland Partners requests a site plan approval under Section 3.2.2.1 and 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a two-family dwelling on property located at 28-30 Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map 65, parcel 70. Is there anyone here for that hearing?
I don't see Wendy, Clay Williams or Stephen McConnell.
Okay, so can we have a motion to continue that to, the next hearing is, what, the?
June 23rd.
23rd? June 23rd. We have a motion to continue to June 23, the Eastland Partners' hearing.
Scott Ren, so moved.
Mr. Ren has made the motion, is there a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
Mr. Chambers, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
I'm going to remind everybody on this hearing to please mute your microphone when you're not responding, okay? Thank you. And I, Wendy Seinhuber, aye. It is a vote. I'm going to just skip ahead here for a minute, Adam. The applicant CGT requesting a special permit and site plan approval under 3.9.2.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a drive-through coffee shop has withdrawn the application without prejudice, and I'm going to need a motion to accept, please.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Brooks has made the motion, is there a second?
This is Nick, I'll make the second.
Nick Lynch has made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Seinhuber, aye. It is a vote. And also, applicant SZLL Realty LLC definitive subdivision plan for 13 lot single-family home development on property located at 178 Hampton Street and 19 Eaton Avenue, map 12, parcel 120, again for continuance. Adam, is that correct?
They, it looks like they are on the line, if you want to listen to hear what they're saying.
All right, so we'll jump back to the Massad Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval, which was the next item on the agenda. I was under the impression that that was continued, but. So Massad Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for property landscape and site layout reconfiguration on property located at 54 Faith Ave. Is there anyone here for that meeting, for that hearing? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion to continue to June 23.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Brooks makes the motion, is there a second?
There's a second, Scott Ren.
Mr. Ren, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Seinhuber, aye. It is a vote. Continue to June 23. So let's go back to SZLL Realty. We have, who's here for SZLL Realty, definitive subdivision plan?
This is Joe Graham, the engineer of record for this. I'm here for this tonight. We are continuing, we are working through the site plan comments, or the subdivision comments right now, but we wanted to show up in case there was questions by the Board, in case there was anything else, as we work through these questions and as we work through the comments. Do you want, I could give an update?
That would be great, thank you.
Okay.
Wendy, do we have to open the hearing, or, Adam, is it considered already open still?
It's already open, or it's been continued from previous meetings.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
All right. So we received comments back from Graves back on May 11, right before the previous meeting, and obviously this is their third review. We're working through, most of the comments were minor, there is the biggest portion of their comments is related to the detention basin, and obviously on the site grading is pretty tricky, so we have to rework some of the grading along that detention basin area, as well as the access road at the rear of the site. So those are the areas that we're going through right now. We do plan to have another set of plans shortly for the Board to send over to Graves for them to review. Most of the comments that I've worked through already are pretty good, I think after this third review, we've worked out a lot of the bigger issues. However, the detention basin is the final, I guess, large issue. Obviously, we're trying to keep the detention basin outside the 25-foot nostructure buffer for the wetlands at the rear of the project, and we'll be filing with Conservation Commission after this, and so those are the key points for us to finish up on the subdivision plan, the detention basin and the access to that rear detention basin, yeah.
Great, well, it sounds like it's moving along, and we look forward to reviewing and talking at the next meeting. So do you feel like you'll be prepared for the 23rd meeting, or did you want to move it out?
No, we feel like we'd be prepared for the 23rd meeting.
Okay. All right, then, thank you for the update. I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing to the June 23. Did someone make that motion?
Steve Chambers, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Chambers has made the motion, is there a second?
This is Nick, I'll second that.
Mr. Nick Lynch, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
I'm recused from this matter.
Okay, Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Seinhuber, aye. It is a vote. Thank you. We'll see you on the 23rd.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so subdivision modification reserved at Bashworth Hill. My understanding, Adam, do you want to just give the Board an update on that?
Sure, this has been on the agenda since the last meeting, I believe. This is a modification to the Albert Street five lot subdivision. We sent the revised plans to Graves a couple weeks ago. We have not yet received the review back yet, should receive, receiving any time, so I don't believe they're on the line for this, but hopefully they'll be ready for the next meeting. The Board doesn't have to take any action, it's not a public hearing, it's a modification at this point.
Okay. All right, and so the next item on the agenda is the site plan modification for Two Bridge Street Hammerhead Lot, special permit. Is there someone available to speak to that?
Yes, hello, my name's Ryan Healy, good evening.
Good evening. Can you tell us a little bit about the request for the modification, for the site plan modification?
Sure, absolutely. So I wrote a little narrative, would you like me to read the narrative to all the parties involved, or should I just give my own little interpretation of it?
Probably do your own little interpretation.
Okay, so my wife Danielle, who's here with me, my wife Danielle and I, we purchased the land on Two Bridge Street in October of 2018, and since then, we've kind of been working diligently to assemble a team of professionals that can help build our dream home, and the teams that we've lined up were Clearwater Environmental for our septic, the engineers at HS&amp;T in Worcester, and LaBelle Custom Homes down in Webster. So since getting our team together, we found that the most appropriate place to plot this house while respecting nature and the landscape is a little bit more forward on the map than the, one of the restraints or conditions on the special permit requires. So what we were looking to do, or what we were asking to do, is to request a modification on that special permit to allow the house to be brought forward a little bit. The handle extends about 135 feet back into the property, and then past the handle would probably be the best place to put that house. And then, given the slope on the back left corner of the lot, we were asking to accept the site plan with certain areas of the plan to have a slope greater than 3 to 1. And I hope I'm explaining this all right, because this is my first public forum, and I'm a little nervous.
That's right, we understand that. Adam, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
We discussed it internally, I really don't have a problem with changing the conditions of the original approval that was done back in 2006. I did research for how to find out why 185 feet was chosen, and it didn't specify, I think 135 feet, it's still outside the handle per the M had required, so I really don't have an issue with it. The sloping, it's up to the Board, obviously, but I don't have an issue with if certain areas are greater than 3 to 1, it's kind of, as long as isolated away from the house and not going to interfere with anything, no drain, no water coming onto other properties or the roadway, I think it's okay.
All right, Mr. Brooks, any comments?
I'm okay.
Mr. Ren?
I'm fine with the setback, where is it, the greater than 3 to 1, is it the back right of the property?
Mr. Healy, it's in back left hand side of the property, correct?
Yeah, so if Bridge Street, yeah, back left of the property.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Mr. Lynch?
I have no comment.
Mr. Chambers?
No comments.
You know, my comments are that I think that the handle portion of the lot is more than sufficient, and where the home is not going to be situated directly in the handle but just above it, I don't see any issue with it myself either. So I will entertain a motion to accept the site plan modification to move Dallas from 130, 185 feet, 135 feet setback from the roadway. Do I have a motion?
Wendy, sorry to interrupt, you want to address that it's a modification?
Yeah, that's what I said, a minor modification to the site plan. Great, thank you, Rachel. And before I do that, is there any public comments on this particular item on the agenda? All right, hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the site plan modification.
Scott Ren, I'd like to first, I'd like to first take a vote, that we all agree that this is a minor modification to the plan?
Minor modification.
Okay, Mr. Brooks?
I was going to say the same thing, where I think we need to take the vote that it's a minor modification.
Minor modification, okay. Mr. Ren, you made a motion. Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Seinhuber, aye. So it's a minor modification, the vote is approved, and now, do we need another vote?
Yes, please.
To accept it? Okay, so to accept it, someone make that motion?
Scott Ren, I'll make that motion to approve.
Mr. Ren made the motion, is there a second?
This is Nick, I'll second it.
Mr. Lynch, seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Seinhuber, aye. It is a vote. Good luck. Good luck, Mr. Healy, you're all set.
Thank you so much, everybody. Do I need to address the 3 to 1 grade ratio, does that need a separate vote?
No, we said that it was a minor modification, and we've approved that minor modification in addition to the house being moved. Adam, do you approve?
Yes, I will write up a decision tomorrow and send it out for them, so I'll have it in writing.
Wonderful, thank you very much, team, have a wonderful evening.
You as well, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Discussion on the open space plan, Adam?
Yes, thank you. The town's open space and recreation plan is going to be expiring in November 2021. I'm going to be beginning the process of rewriting that plan, this is a state required plan, this plan will allow the town to continue to apply for certain grants. I wanted to bring it before the Planning Board to offer a seat on the committee that's to be formed to one of the members, if they'd like to participate. We're going to be asking this Board, Conservation Commission, and the Board of Selectmen if they'd like to send a representative from their respective Boards to participate, as well as we'll be asking other residents at large to participate. So we're hoping to, I'm hoping to really get this rolling come September, October, have the first committee meeting at that time, and we can start writing the new plan. So if this Board would like to, it doesn't have to be tonight, I wanted to bring it up, if a member wants to volunteer, wants to be appointed to this Board, that would be great.
All right, great, well, everybody has now been made aware of it, and so we can probably discuss it further at the next meeting. If anybody would like to volunteer, contact Adam. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. The electronic signatures, John isn't here this evening, so we're going to kick that can down the road again, but things are starting to get back to some semblance of normalcy. Do you foresee that we are going to be meeting face to face anytime soon, or just continue to go to Town Hall and sign the documents?
I don't know when we'll be able to resume normal meetings in person, I hope soon, but that's not my decision. At this point, we'll still need members to come into the Town Hall to sign, we have multiple options now. If you don't want to come into the Town Hall, there's a kiosk that's now being staffed outside Town Hall. You can also run over to the Board of Selectmen's office, we've been keeping the plans, there's fewer people in that office, and I can always run something out if you have to, to meet you. So there are options to sign these So there are options to, to sign these documents, they have to be signed at some point, particularly the ANRs, which have to be signed in ink, so I know the applicants would like to see those signed at some point, so they can go forward.
Okay. So we do have multiple options, I think everybody does what's right to them now, and we'll talk again about the electronic signatures when we get everybody to have a discussion. Do you want to talk about the summer schedule, Adam?
Sure, last year, we had a shortened schedule, we met once in July and once in August, I wasn't sure if that was what the board would like to do again this year, I figured I'd include it to be discussed. I can't foresee how many projects are going to be coming in for the summer, I know it's light right now, but that could change suddenly, there's no, really no way of judging, but I wanted, again, you don't have to make a decision necessarily tonight, but if you want to do a shortened schedule for, for July and August, that's, that's your call.
Okay, well, I for one am all for the shortened schedule in the summertime, and I think, as we've done in years past, if, you know, something pressing comes up, we will, you know, discuss it at that time and, and make course corrections as necessary. Does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
I, I agree with you, Wendy, I think this year's a little bit different insofar as things slowed down over the spring a little bit, so if there is a surge, I'd definitely be open to having, you know, meetings as normal, but I, at this point, if there's not more than coming in, I'd rather go one per month for, for July and August, for sure.
Okay, thank you, Scott, anybody else want to weigh in on that?
I'm in favor of it, Ronnie.
Okay. Wendy? Steve, did you have any, even Nick, any additional comments?
No, I have no additional comments.
Okay. So I think, Adam, that probably, it sounds like we concur that one meeting in July and one in August, and should, you know, the need arise, we'd certainly be willing to, you know, hold another one as necessary.
Okay, that sounds good, do you want to pick the two dates, do you want to do the first, the second Tuesday in July and the second Tuesday in August?
Um, second Tuesday in July would be the seventh, no, I wouldn't be able to make that meeting myself, we'll be vacationing, but should we move it to the, the third week? Or the fourth? Could we do the third week in June, the 21st?
Uh, yeah, I don't see why.
July?
Would be in a short.
Anyone else have any thoughts on July 21st?
That's fine for me.
Fine for me.
That works for me. Works for me.
Okay, sounds like we have a, of July 21st and August, August 11th or the 18th? How about the 18th, August 18th?
Works for me.
That works for me.
Works for me.
Fine with me.
Okay. July 21st and August 18th it is.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and the last item tonight is the MVP Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant, can you tell us about that, Adam? There's a letter, but...
Yes, I'll give you a little bit of background, yes, the town received an MVP grant in January, it was a two-fold project, one was to address protecting the water supply from contamination, and the other part was to develop some concepts for a green bridge over the Sword Street culverts, where the canal that crosses underneath Sword Street, those culverts are failing and need a replacement, we received that grant, developing, we're well underway on those, on that grant. This new grant will be a continuation of the culvert replacement, we're looking for grants to do the engineering portion of the design, we're hopeful that, that the state will give us the funds needed to continue that project. Another part of the grant would be an education piece for the residents in the Leesville Pond area, both in Auburn and in Worcester, we're looking to educate that area on water quality and to try to improve the water quality of Leesville Pond, it's, it's not the best water quality, it has a lot of phosphorus, and there's some invasive species, and is, just, it's not, not the best of freshwater water bodies. This grant is due next week, we're looking for this, the planning board's support in this project, it helps demonstrate to the, to EO, EA, that the town supports the project, is going to work towards the project, the Board of Selectmen voted to support the project last night, and I've received letters of support from CMRPC, the Blackstone Water Shed Association, and the Leesville Pond Association, so the board, the planning board's support will be helpful, and hopefully we can get this grant.
Anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion for vote to support this grant.
This is Nick, I'll make a vote to support this grant.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Lynch has made the motion, Mr. Brooks has seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy sign over, aye. Thank you, it is a vote. And the final, we have minutes from May 12th and May 26th, does anybody have any comments or, or changes for Rachel, she did a great job, and if not, would somebody please make a motion for the May 12th meeting minutes to accept?
This is Nick, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the May 12th meeting.
Okay, Mr. Lynch has made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brooks has seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
I don't believe I was there.
Okay, Mr. Ren?
I believe I was not at that meeting as well.
Okay, and Wendy sign over, aye, it is a vote. And then for the 26th, I have to, I was not at that meeting, but would somebody make a motion, or do they have any comments or corrections for Rachel?
Scott Ren, I'll make the motion to approve those minutes on the 26th of May.
Okay, Mr. Ren has made the motion, is there a second?
This is Nick, I'll second it.
Mr. Lynch has seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
It is a vote. Okay, is there, I, I have no new business on the scene, any other updates or items, Adam? Um, can I just say something, I don't think Ron was at the last meeting to vote on the minutes. Were you there on the 26th, Mr. Brooks?
Uh, the last one, no, I, I couldn't get on, I, I don't think.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay, so, we have three, um...
Thank you, Rachel.
Okay. Mr. Matt, is there, are there any other items this evening?
Um, Adam Chairman, this is Don O'Neill, I'm a lawyer for SCZLL Realty, and I, I was delayed and I, I tuned into the meeting, actually not that late, but about 7:15 or so, so, was that, and we were just requesting additional time on that item, was that continued to the next meeting?
Yes, we continue that to June 23rd, Mr. O'Neill.
Okay, alright, I just, I, I was about 15 minutes late, and you whipped through the schedule, so I just wanted to make sure that, that that was continued, and that's all I, that's the only question that I had, thank you.
We had a lot of continuations this evening, okay, so we'll, we'll talk to you again on the 23rd then, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, bye now. Adam?
Yes, I don't have anything further at this time.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to... John?
This is Nick, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Lynch has made the motion, is there a second?
This is Mr. Chambers.
Mr. Chambers is second, all those in favor, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy sign over, aye. Thank you all, have a great evening.
Thank you.
See you on the 23rd, good night.